We will now open the reorganization meeting. Will everyone stand to sit?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
Our first order of business is to swear in the re-elected board members. Mrs. McLaughlin and Mr. Smith, meet at your own at your seats. If you don't mind, say side to side.
I, Judge McLaughlin, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Education member of the Amherst Central School District according to the test of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. And if you'll sign that, and I will put it up in a little bit. Our second order of business is to elect board officers. And at this time, I will need a nomination for Board President.
I would like to make the first nomination for Board President for Mr. Paul Steinle.
In a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Steinle, will you accept the nomination?
I will, thank you.
Okay. So we will have a vote as Mr. Steinle for President of Board of Education. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then it's six, zero. I now need a nomination for Vice President.
I'll nominate Jean Ernst.
In a second?
I'll say it.
I did get something from Mrs. Ernst that she would be happy to accept the position of Vice President if she were nominated. So we will now vote for Jean Ernst as Vice President of the Board of Education. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And again, we are at six, zero. What I will need to do is give an oath of office to President Steinle. And at the next board meeting, order if Mrs. Ernst chooses to come in and give her her vote at that time. Whenever you're ready.
All right. I, Paul Steinle, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Education President of the Amherst Central School District according to the test of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you. And you are now in charge of the rest.
For the first thing we need to do is discuss committee representation. I sent everybody an email yesterday. I think Mrs. Custody put together kind of a list based on everybody's responses, which I think everybody has in front of you. So I don't know if there's any other changes anybody wants to do, or some of it was we did just put in some people if we didn't hear anything what you may have felt last year. If there's any changes you want to make, please let us know.
Mr. Steinle, did you want to go over what I did put in from last year?
Sure, that would be fine.
So for the Audit Committee, we still have Mr. Smith and Mr. Vieglo along with Patrick Tan. That was correct, okay. And for Erie County Association of School Boards, Representative to Budget and Finance, Mark Smith and Lori Goldhawk is alternate. Is that okay with you? Okay. And then the last is Representative to Communications Team for ECMSB. And last year, it was Mrs. McLaughlin. Are you still able to do that? Great.
All right, we'll group with that. You can then move on. Looks like we will now need a motion to approve the rework agenda. So we have, Mrs. Custody, should I read it off?
You're welcome to if you would like.
So the motion would start with item four, just so everybody's aware, and then go through item XI. Somebody wants to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the reorganization agenda items, items four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Do we have a second?
How's that, Ms. McLaughlin?
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving rework items four, A through F, five, E through DD, six, E through I, seven, E through F, eight, nine, E through F, and 10, E through M, and 11, E through O, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries six, zero. We will now need to administer the oath to the district clerk.
Anne, the acting court of my house.
Oh, yes, Anne, I'm sorry. Anne, the acting. Is this? My husband?
Yes.
I, Anne McLaughlin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk of the Amherst Central School District according to the test of my ability, so help me God.
At this time, the rework portion of this meeting is adjourned, and the regular session begins. So we do not have any visitors wishing to speak. We don't know, have we had any committee meetings?
We've approved the policy, the plus twenty percent one, the review online, it was pitching uniforms, the grandma, and the first meeting, so it's the agenda for that. So that was it for policy.
Any other ones? Okay. So just real quick, as part of our rework meeting, we have our board protocol, just to go over, make sure, is there any changes anybody wants to make to it? Is everybody still good with it? If so, we can. Any discussion on that? All right. Then we will move on to the superintendents' report.
Okay, the first item that I have is the board topics for 2021. And, you know, this is probably going to be a very fluid situation, you know, given the nature of what we're facing. We'll try to do the best to anticipate, you know, the topics that would be routine, such as, you know, budget and that calendar, as well as our HR items that are routine throughout the year. As you know, we are putting the 2021 strategic plan action items on hold this year, so that all of our buildings and district can focus on reopening planning, which we'll talk about momentarily. We do have the opportunity, if the need arises, for our buildings to provide an update. I know President Steinle mentioned to me that there was two topics that came to him as possible additions. Can you refresh my memory, please?
Yeah, Mr. Vieglo had asked for some topics to be added concerning discussion of just, you know, what our debt situation is, you know, with the district, where, you know, our debt is, how we're cycling off, where we're at currently, and how we compare to other districts in the area. And I think the other item was.
Investments.
Investments, correct. But, Doc, he does have those, just so you know.
So we can add those two. Investments is probably something that's a little more timely in either August or September. And then the debt conversation, we could look at either in the fall or winter, depending on what we have here and how things proceed. But, you know, like I said, we, well, as you mentioned in the protocol, we typically, you know, Paul, Jean, and I, we meet the Thursday before our board meeting, and there's times when there's changes to the superintendent's report items. And of course, if something comes up that you'd like information on, we're always able to add things. But this is a unique and unusual year, so our ability to anticipate everything that's in front of us is somewhat limited. So we'll make sure we keep flexibility as it relates to these topics.
Great.
Are there any other additions, other than the debt, the schedule of debt, and how it compares to other districts related to the percent of our budget and our investment plan? I did put on the last page some things that we don't want to forget, particularly once the technology committee meetings are scheduled, and if they are, if they continue as normal, we would look to add updates after those meetings. And then construction updates, I know we have a couple of them in here as scheduled. And then we would want to look at our building visits and a retreat. So those are some topics to keep in mind for August. Can patch that out? Okay? Any other discussion about the topics? I wanted to talk a little bit about the process we're using to plan for reopening. So as I previously mentioned, we face a pretty daunting task in reopening after having closed for several months due to the COVID-19 pandemic. It's obviously something we've never had to do before. So right now, there's not a great blueprint for us to follow. So we are doing the best we can with the limited information that we have from our governor and our state education department. We are told that there's two concurrent processes going on right now. The governor created a task force to reimagine education, and it's expected that there will be some guidance from that group. And then the state education department conducted four regional reopening task force meetings, which I have the ability to participate in the Western New York one. And it's expected that they will present their regulatory changes and guidance to the board of regents at the meeting next week. So we're hoping we get guidance from the state education department and some possible mandatory regulatory changes as early as next week. So with that timeline that we have, we put together a process that started, you know, several weeks ago, because we knew this was not something we could just start, you know, in person live. So we put together reopening planning teams, and we have one per building, which is really focused on the procedural and operational components of the building, and how we're going to incorporate some of the safety elements and cleaning and hygiene and training components. Each of those committees has 10 to 12 people on them and represents a broad spectrum of the building. So we have parents, you know, clerical staff, paraprofessionals, administration, teachers, all a representative group involved in those. Dr. Shanahan is leading our teaching and learning team, which is focusing on the components we need to be prepared for the potential of another closure or to refine our remote learning practices, in addition to planning for what it might look like if we are in a hybrid situation, which I can explain in a little bit more momentarily. And then Mr. Bellisle is leading our social emotional learning team, which is really focused on the health, safety, and welfare of our students, support for our parents and families, as well as our staff. So if you look at each of those groups, there's anywhere from 60 to 75 people across the district involved in this planning process. Our goal is a simple one, or it's simply stated, but it may not be as simply achieved. But the goal is to create thoughtful and safe reopening plans that support the students, staff, and community. We're working on three scenarios. So scenario one is onsite construction, depending upon the guidance we get from the governor's office. If we are to reopen onsite, we are going through and planning for safety precautions, cleaning, and, you know, items around those topics. The hybrid model is a model where essentially you would have students attending 50% of the time, so that we could reduce the density in the building, so that we could have full social distancing. Because in the first model onsite, we'll do the best we can with social distancing, but with each of our buildings housing roughly 800 to 900 people, it will be difficult to maintain a six-foot distance at all times, just because of the nature of how schools operate. And then the third model is our virtual remote learning model, which we implemented in the spring, but we know that having done that for the first time, there are some refinements we could make if we need to implement that again. So my task to Dr. Shanahan's committee was really to focus on how we might be able to switch from in-person to remote almost seamlessly. You know, and we need to do some things in the beginning of the school year with devices and training of students and staff and families in order to be able to make that switch overnight if the need arises. So that's the three models we're working on. We started out trying to develop a shared understanding, so all committee members really focused on three documents to anchor our thinking. The first one is the CDC guidance from the federal government, and then the New York Forward website and plans for reopening. At this point, we're using the template that has been given to businesses throughout phase two, and three, and four, as they've been required to develop plans to reopen. And then the capital region BOCs in the Albany area put out a pretty good guidance document with questions and things to consider for reopening. Since we put this process together, I would say, you know, early, juvily May, there's been several other states that have issued guidance documents for their public schools that we've also been leaning on quite heavily, in particular, North Carolina, California, Massachusetts, Connecticut, to name a few. But there are a few templates out there that are aligned to the CDC guidance that seem to be where New York is heading. So in anticipation of the guidance we'll get from New York, we're looking at information from those states.
Mr. Villan?
Yes.
I know this sort of theory kind of something to look at more in the future. But in the hybrid model, is the thought today in school, virtual, in school, virtual, if you're not in?
Yes, yes. So the thought would be that, and at this point, you know, it's not fully developed, but the thought would be to have 50% of the kids in the building at any given time to allow us greater distance in all of the classrooms in the building.
And then what is adding to the other 50% there?
They would be working either remotely.
Okay.
Yes. So the planning process is designed to develop one plan with all of those components coming together. We are expecting, through information that has been communicated during press conferences or through the reorganizing task force that I participated with state head, we are expecting that we will have to develop a plan that will be submitted to some entity for approval. We're just not sure what that group will be, if it's the state education department or if it's going to be the governor's office, hoping at some point that those two task forces that are working on guidance for us will mesh and come together, along with the New York State Department of Health, so that we have one set of guidance we're working on and one plan to develop and submit. So our five planning components that we're working on, and this is primarily for our building-based teams, which I mentioned, are working on, you know, operationalizing, social distancing. So we've picked the five categories that were in the New York plans for businesses, the first one being physical distancing, the second one is the hygiene and cleaning. You know, the third one we're working on is equipment, whether that be polycarbonylic plastic barriers, or masks, or shields. There's other cleaning equipment that we're also considering in there. The third category is monitoring and screening of entrance, people coming into the buildings, and then communication and training, not only for students, staff, but also for families. You know, and that would be hygiene practices, hand washing, you know, how to cough and sneeze appropriately, how to reduce the spread of respiratory diseases. Three planning considerations from those five components include specific procedures, you know, some of the things we're talking about, you know, our physical setting here, cafeteria. You look at that sign that says maximum occupancy, not to exceed 237 people. You know, you can imagine if you had 237 people in here right now, it might be very difficult to spread out. And, you know, the tables that are folded up are the tables that are typically used for serving lunch. So we're looking at specific procedures from cafeteria, hallway passing time, classroom capacity, if we were spread out three feet, if we were spread out six feet. We're looking at, you know, physical education class, how that may and may operate. There's a whole host of other components, things from recess, playground, you know, you name it, anything that we do in our schools is being reconsidered and evaluated through the lens of those five categories that are to the left. Staff training, you know, awareness about COVID-19, which most people have, how it spreads, how to minimize the spread of it, good hygiene practices, you know, those types of things. And then instructional considerations, such as where you really get into your hybrid model and your remote models. So it gets down to, you know, you have in the hybrid model, you know, group A attending on Mondays and Wednesdays, you know, group B attending on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so that you're at capacity in the building and in the classrooms, with remote learning on Fridays, allowing our, you know, having the ability for us to spread out. At this point, we don't know when we would enact those plans, remote learning and the hybrid plan, because up to this point, the governor has been the one to open and close the schools. So in my mind, I would hope that that would be tied to the regional data that was used for the four phases. So we are putting together a plan where if we're in phase four as a Western New York region, you know, we're anticipating we would be onsite. If we're in phase three, based on how data comes around, that might be our hybrid model. And then if we revert it back to phase one or two, that would probably result in a 100% remote learning model. That's just how we have carved it out as a planning team, but we're not sure if that's how the state will also follow, whether or not we have to implement those things or those different models. So part of what we did is we put together a schedule, which may more than likely change, but in anticipation of July 13 guidance, our admin team has been working on draft plans. And then we have a whole week scheduled next week to meet as an administrative cabinet for the entire day. And our goal is to have a draft plan for each of those areas that I previously described. So our committees can get together and look at them and put the finishing touches on them in anticipation of them needing to be submitted to the state prior to us opening. So our tentative schedule has our full committee's meeting in July and August, but based on the timeline we get from the state and when we get guidance, we are more than likely going to need to modify that. There has been some feedback solicited. So I participated in a multi-district survey initiative through Erie One BOCs. There are 19 component districts in Erie One BOCs, and 17 of the 19 of us worked on a survey tool to administer to our constituents. And that information has been shared out with our community and is also available on our website. But if you look at this, there is a statement that was put together by us 17 superintendents. It's not an easy task, if you've ever been in a room with superintendents, to get 17 people to agree to one common statement, though we did it. And the goal was really to solicit feedback between June 10th and 19th, I believe it was available, from our families about their thoughts on reopening. So both of those documents are here in their entirety. There was 25,000 people in Western New York that took the survey, and that data is available here. In addition, we then were able to carve out our Amherst-only responses. And as you can see from the Western New York data, out of the 25,000 people that participated, Amherst represented almost 6% of those responses with close to 1,500 respondents. And then, so that represents the 25,000 responses that we received. And then our Amherst-specific data is also available here for each of the questions that was asked. So again, it's not an exact science, but when you're planning to reopen during a pandemic and an extended closure, I think it's important to know how your community feels and what their thoughts are as you're putting together those plans. In addition to that, Dr. Shanahan also worked with some of our teachers to conduct a survey of our middle and high school students based upon their experience from remote learning to help us refine our remote learning practices as well, in the event that we have to implement them again in the future.
So as Tony said, one of the, he was getting feedback from our parents and community at large, regionally, as well as within district. One of the things that I wanted to do to inform the teaching and learning committee was to get feedback from our students and our teachers. So I, we put a survey out to middle and high school students who've had the longest online experience. And we, with the goal of finding out, what was this experience like for them? What would they tell us? Because on the teaching and learning committee, we use the results that you have access to to inform some of the changes that we're going to make. And the other thing that I did do was I met with every grade level in every department. I called it my Zoom marathon that lasted about eight days, from 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. And I spoke with every team of teachers and every grade level of teachers. And that was really good, so we have that feedback too. So we have feedback from all school stakeholders as we move forward and revise our plan. But tonight, I want to share with you a little bit about what our middle school and high school students said. We had a 53% response rate, which in internal survey, usually 30 to 40 is typical. So yay us, we're a little above the norm, which I love. And I'll give you a little bit of demographics so that you know whose voices we're hearing, because it's not proportional all the way across. So we had a slightly higher response rate from our middle school, at 56.7%, to 43.3% at our high school. And if you notice, sixth and seventh grade had the highest response rate. We sent these out through math classes, because that's a course that almost everybody is enrolled in. We were trying to figure, how do you get it out to everybody? And we also gave it the last two weeks, for the last two weeks of school. So you'll notice our seniors had probably at that point said, "Thank you for a great year, moving on." So they're our lowest response rate. And then we asked them a general question, just, "Did you enjoy your online learning experience?" And just put it on a Likert scale to see what type of response we would get. And we did get 52.4% that said they agreed, that they liked it, with another 8.7% that strongly agreed. So when you put those two categories together, it was more positive than it was negative. But I still think, you know, we need to attend and dig down to the students who, you know, who didn't have as positive of an experience. And I think as we move on, we'll see what we think, you know, why that would be. So we did ask an open-ended question. We had lots of apps, right? We'd have kids in lots of different digital spaces. So we did ask them, and this is just a word cloud, what online resources were your teachers using? And we didn't do it in a checklist, we just let them free respond that out. EdPuzzle, which includes video and interaction, YouTube, which they liked. It's a little lighter up here, which is also very large, so it was heavily, you know, written down as a tool that they liked. YouTube was, it was either that the teacher put a video in there of him or herself for the student to watch with directions or modeling something. They wrote in the responses that they liked that part, or it was video plus then paired with some type of questions to answer, to get them into new learning spaces. So they did tend to like the more interactive spaces. When we started this, we were planning in two-week chunks. We did that all the way along. But who knew it was going to go all the way through the school year? So we started with expectations that were, you know, Tony put out to the community that at the middle school and high school level, we were going to be addressing new learning and reinforcement with about, teachers were to post and do about 30 to 40 minutes worth of work per class. We were not at that time requiring synchronous learning, which is that face-to-face, real-time learning, but, I'm sorry, screen-to-screen, real-time learning. We told them that they could do this work asynchronously, which would mean like, I can do the work. You post it in there, I can do it, watch my video, do it whenever I want, right? Interestingly, which I'm quite proud of, we have a high proportion of students that had virtual meetings, and that was not required, which tells me that they need connections, and so do the teachers. So we made multiple, we had two video platforms available to try out in this situation. And we did a lot of PD, Donna Frymeyer and her, our library media specialist, ran weekly one-hour workshops all through the week to try to get people up to speed on the effective use of these platforms. And I'm glad to see that the students did have the meetings and there were over 600 responses to this positive out of our 800, and I think it was 39, 849 total. So I know our teachers wanted to do it, and so did our students. We're social, right? We need those connections.
Can I make a comment on that?
Absolutely.
So I thought that was an interesting slide when I was looking through, because I have three grade levels of students.
Yes.
And those virtual meetings were an absolute exception and not the rule.
Right.
And they were very limited and a very small number.
Right, and it wouldn't have been an expectation across, so it could be hit or miss by grade level, by teacher, yeah. So that's-
So I mean, that almost answers, if you had one, you could have answered affirmatively.
Right.
So I'm not sure one, you know, is-
I agree, and I bring that too, because my seventh-grade daughter, she had a couple, two or three, where my fifth-grade daughter had them every day. So did you have?
Yes.
Yes, but I think they need more.
And we, and so wanted to follow up with that and triangulate that data. When I met with the teachers one-on-one, they did share with me who did, how many, how comfortable they were, et cetera. And we're even talking, what we're doing this summer is talking about the instructional model. So when is it a good time to do the synchronous, you know, teaching together, and when is it not? Because there are times when it's not the most effective way, just due to the context. And we're working on developing our model off of that. So you're right, it could be, one, it probably was hit or miss dependent on who. But you'll see later that the students also liked having that personal contact when they did. So I was able to locate my assignments in Google Classroom. We have lots of anecdotal information around this, as well as the students said they agreed and strongly agree that they can find it. We've been using Google Classroom since 2012. I will tell you, just from having to help parents online, having to help students online, that there was a repertoire of ways to handle that. So one of the things that we have been working on is best practices in Google Classroom. We are launching workshops with departments and grade levels this summer to go over lessons learned. Because we, two things, one, it's very confusing for students when I posted one way, Laura posted it a different way, and then somebody else posts it another way. And also, if you're a parent trying to assist your child, you're looking all over the place for where- An example would be, we have some people posting assignments in the stream, which is really the social part of it versus the classroom. And if you post in the stream, it never pushes onto the student's to-do list, which means as a parent, if I'm trying to monitor what my child's doing, it won't show up there. So we did a pivot, we got great feedback from parents on our Amherst hotline. And we went in and we did a quick, every faculty meeting where we talked to everybody about, you know, where and why. And that will definitely help our parents, and our students have checklists of where to find that information. So although this is positive, we're still working on it, on our best practices, so that they're somewhat consistent. I feel comfortable contacting my teacher. Yes was 56.2, 40.2, sometimes dependent on a teacher, it's a relationship bound. Plus, I think it's very difficult when you are working screen-to-screen versus face-to-face. You don't have that, you don't bump into somebody in a classroom. You can't go in for those office hours unless we strategically create spaces synchronously for virtual office hours, so that kids know that they can go in there. Or we have synchronous components where students and teachers are in those spaces planned, scheduled, so that then you have a question that makes sense that you're asking it there. But it's very hard for a lot of students to initiate those conversations, especially when you have physical distance involved. So we are working on creating ways for those, you know, interactions to take place next year, even though this is positive. It's like Dominic mentioned, there's still room to grow off of these and learn. Your schoolwork, level of concern of your schoolwork, it was somewhat worried to little or no. So that's where, maybe because of our digital spaces more often, I'm not really sure why. Have to follow up with more questions around that for those students. And how did you feel about the amount of work, just right and spare or too little? I was bored, and the last one was too much, I couldn't keep up. So one of the things I know Mike and I talked about frequently was the amount of work. The gauging, how much is enough? And then the other thing you have to think about is if students are working all day, do they have enough time to get everything done to post by the end of the day? So there was some flexibility in posting as well. So just right seemed to be the respondents for this. We only had 53%, so there may be those that disagree. How well do you feel online learning went? Pretty well, but some small problems. That was pretty positive. And then our next highest response was fairly frustrating and confusing. And I think it was a really big shift for everybody. I think we did some things really well. I think we had teachers in sixth through 12, some that were using Google Classroom before, so some students were more familiar than others. But we're hoping to see an increase in positive responses here as well. So the things that they missed most are almost all social in nature, right, in that physical space. They miss their friends, their interactions, their teachers, their ability to ask questions, extracurriculars. It's all of those social interactions that are so important to people in general. And then your biggest challenge is, if you notice, there was a lot here that clustered in this area, which was understanding directions, understanding a lesson, and it was hard to focus. It was hard to focus on their own. And you'll see some of those responses trail off in some of the examples that I'll go through in a second. So it's a little darker here. I thought these were some decent guiding principles for our teaching and learning committee to look through. I thought these were helpful. Set a clear schedule. Similar expectations across classes. And this related to assigning due dates and posting times for them to be due. So we have to be flexible in the second half of the year due to access with accountability. So that will not be the case next year, because everybody will start off the year and have their devices. So we don't need to worry about access to internet, we don't need to worry about access to computers and devices. So we're, we will, the committee will write very clear expectations that will be shared with the parents and with the students as well. More structure obviously goes with the first full appointment, clear schedule. More virtual meetings, which is that synchronous component again, which for some are frequent and others infrequent. More teacher-made video lessons, right? If you don't do the teaching of the new learning through video or through a synchronous, then you're pushing out assignments, and that's not what we're looking for. And so the students responded and they're convinced that they like teacher-made videos for that new learning. And the benefit of that too is kids can replay them. So if I model and I give my input and I put that and record that, if I'm watching that as my, part of my day home, I can go back and replay. I can write down my questions from there, and then I can work through that with, on higher levels with the teacher when we're in those synchronous spaces. Better explanation of directions, which was on the graph as well. Get grades and back sooner, so we did a lot of completes and incompletes as part of what New York State was asking. More time to complete assignments and don't make them due at the end of the day. That's that if I'm working through everything, I might run out of time. So those are going to be helpful for the committee to look at next week. And I just like to hear their voices, because I think you can, I think these reflect what we saw in the survey as well. They don't like the lack of being social. So this online experience from our 12th grader was they didn't enjoy it. Learning information on a screen is not as effective as learning information that I hear from teacher talking to me face-to-face and doing work on paper. Now, our 11th grader liked being up to self-paced, but also still missed the social interaction with teacher, right? There's a common trend or pattern in that qualitative data for us. I like this one especially, because it's got a little bit of everything that I think kids were going through. It's difficult to stay motivated throughout the week, and I usually have a lot of work to catch up on over the weekends. Because online learning is asynchronous, that takes a lot of self-regulation, right? That's a big ask. One time, I didn't realize my teacher had posted something, and then I turned it in really late. I think most of the problems that I had were because of me. The school wouldn't be able to fix it. And so what helped the most was videos, the teachers posted, and then they needed it to some classes and not others. But I think this is that whole struggle that when you say asynchronous, makes it very difficult for our students. So we would like to next year put a balance in there between synchronous and asynchronous that has a schedule and expectations alongside. Your online learning experience over the past several months, good. The teachers were very supportive, liked Google Classroom and the organization around Google Classroom as well. Although felt at times some of the assignments weren't worthwhile or as challenging. So the other last part was struggling to stick to a schedule was a problem. Learning's been difficult, understanding in class feels better. It's okay, it wasn't my favorite. I liked face-to-face. And then he struggled with social studies, it was not face-to-face. So it just gives you a little bit of their voices, and I don't think it's anything shocking. I think it's what we mean anticipate. But I think it's reinforcing what we call, you know, the parent data, the student data, and this together. So we appreciate the students that did jump on and take that survey, and will use this information as well as all of the other data to inform our group here as a teaching and learning committee.
Yeah, going back to end of February, you know, one of the things that alarmed me at the end of February was when I saw a 23,000-student public school district in Seattle close for two weeks. And obviously, our closure didn't come till March 18th. But I, after that experience and seeing that, I pulled our team together and I reviewed the New York State Department of Health guidelines that we had at that moment. And they basically said, if you have a confirmed case of COVID-19 in your school, you have to close for a day for deep cleaning and contact tracing, and then you may be closed for up to two weeks. So initially, we set out to say, we need to be prepared to close for up to two weeks and educate children in how are we going to do that. So we were well-prepared when the initial closure came. And to Lynn's point, we worked very closely with our teachers' association. And one of the things that our union president said was, people are going to need very clear guidelines for what's expected of them. So initially, we put together an elementary expectations guide and a secondary expectations guide. And in those expectations, it was designed to have some consistency across our schools and grade levels and, you know, for our students and parents. And that worked well for us, but as you can see through the data and your own experiences, there's obviously things that need to be refined. So one of the things that we created throughout the closure was a website. So on our main page, there's a COVID-19 top tab. And when you click on that, we've now transitioned to reopening planning. And so on the left-hand side, we've added our reopening planning, which houses our Western New York Regional Survey data. And we've also, we'll post our plans once they're completed here. So the first one that we posted was for our 12-month employees, which is really our administrators, our clerical staff, our facility staff, for, you know, the expectations for returning to school. So on here, we reviewed this, June 8th was our first day back on-site for our 12-month employees. And Mike's office and our team worked on putting together the expectations. Again, we used the same categories that were apparent in all of the planning from the businesses throughout the phases of physical distancing, protective equipment, hygiene and cleaning, communication and training, and then screening and monitoring. So we have one document available that we've created, and then we have additional ones that are a work in progress. Does anyone have any questions?
Should we, if we go back to a hybrid or a distance learning situation, I know we're talking about, you know, making sure we have the technology. How do we ensure that people have internet?
Well, initially, we did a survey, and we had hotspots that we deployed for people that did not have internet. I think we ordered 50 hotspots and we deployed 48, if I recall, to families and another two to faculty members. So we are doubling that, just so we, in case we miss somebody. But prior to closing, you may recall, the week of March 8th- But prior to closing, you may recall, the week of March 8th, all of our homerooms at Midland High School did a survey that asked if they had computer access and internet access at home. And then, when we closed, we took those responses and reached out to those families and deployed devices. Luckily, we did not have anyone contact us other than the respondents in the survey relative to internet access that required it, but...
Because I know Spectrum put out, you know, free internet to everybody for a while, but I don't know.
There were, I guess, that's, yes, I know. There were all kinds of caveats with that.
Oh, is that...
Oh, yes, so you couldn't have had a previous account. And there was a lot of sales pitch going on with it. So that's why we ended up just going to the hotspots. We wanted to make sure that, you know, we wouldn't know who had a Spectrum account before if we not, did not, so we just got, you know, got them in the hotspots.
Yeah. So, so as part of the pre-opening preparation, are we, is instruction part of that? Or is it, are we just talking about how we reopen and that? The instruction part of being like a separate issue? Meaning, like what you were discussing, asynchronous or synchronous, or, you know, the virtual or what we're...
Yeah, we're working on all three scenarios. We're working on the onsite, and then some accommodations for maybe our vulnerable population of students and staff. The hybrid model, which would include some remote learning and some onsite learning, and then a full remote learning plan.
I know we did a presentation by one or two of the teachers about the flipped classroom. I mean, are we looking more into that, whether or not we need more technology for that? Or if that...
Yeah, we did buy the license for the district for all employees to have access to Zoom, so that we can utilize that. We have tools available for video recording, like Screencastify is one that comes to mind. And along with the Google Suite comes YouTube, because it's integrated along with the Google Suite and the apps that come along with it. So we're looking at, you know, there was, there was some data we've also gleaned, you know, from reading best practices across the nation as everybody jumped into this remote learning. You know, we, there was some people that went to a full synchronous model, meaning every day, the kids logged in to their classes through Zoom with their teachers for 40 minutes, you know, eight times a day. And we've heard from some of the reading we've done that that was a little overwhelming as well. Our model was more asynchronous, where the work was posted, and it was available to kids, and then teachers were available to interact with if they needed help. So we're looking to find, you know, the happy medium there. You know, what would be the appropriate amount of direct contact with kids versus, you know, them working independently? So that's really the work of the Teaching and Learning Team. Our goal is to have, you know, of course, we have a lot of go-getters. So when we put together those expectations for teachers, it was really to make sure that at minimum, our students had the same experience. But we know, we have people that went above and beyond, which is normal. Our goal would be to have minimum expectations that are consistent, so all of our students have, at minimum, a similar experience. But we also know there are people who are more tech-savvy than others, so they're going to go to, you know, higher levels.
Has there been any discussion about transportation?
Yes, so we are also working on food service, which falls under Mrs. De Vizzi's purview. Transportation, and our before-and-after-school program, to name a few. So transportation is, you know, one of those items where, if you look at the CDC guidance, you know, the recommendation that has been put out there is to try to have, you know, one child per seat and use every other row. Unfortunately, that would more than double our fleet if we were to do that. So, we're working with our contractor for student to try to figure out what is going to be the safest way to transport kids. And we're also, and I can show you an example. It's in draft form, but we are also, you know, looking at how that may affect our procedures for drop-off and pickup as well, which as you may recall, is an area of concern that we've had prior to the closure at a couple of our buildings in the first place. So in our reopening planning, this is just to give you an example. You know, we've been chipping away at this, but each of our buildings has a similar template, and then there's some things that apply district-wide. But if you were to look at the... So if you were to look at the categories we outlined, you know, here's physical distancing, and then we broke it down into, you know, signage, hallways and transitions, arrival and dismissal, classrooms, special areas, front office, nurses' offices, gymnasiums, auditorium, cafeteria, staff lounge, elevators, restrooms, public access. So, we're really needing to look at every single thing we do. There's nothing that will be routine or similar to the way it was in the past, you know, in order to make sure that we're opening as safely as possible. So it's a heavy lift in terms of having to analyze everything we do. And some of the things we do, we take for granted because, you know, we've done supply drop-off for years. We've done, you know, procedures for parents to drop their kids off or pick them up at the end of the day for years. But in many cases, it involves the parents coming into the building and signing their kids out. You know, that all has to be reevaluated and reexamined. I will, I guess, mention or end with this. I was talking to one of my colleagues from Niagara County, and he made a statement that stuck with me last week. And he said, "I've never been in a situation where there are so many strong beliefs or ideas on both sides of an issue where both sides are right." And that really makes the task of reopening safely difficult, and in many cases, quite emotional for some. You know, there are many people who feel as though we shouldn't reopen, and we should continue with remote learning. And then there are other people who think we should reopen and have it be as normal as possible. And in both cases, you know, I think those people are right. And in both cases, I think there's experts who are weighing in to support both of those claims. So it is definitely going to be one of the greatest challenges, I think, we face as a leadership team and as a community in our careers or in our, in our lives. Any other questions, comments? I really wanted to share with you the process we put together. Obviously, the product is not going to be available for some of you, some of us. That's the process we're following.
You guys are doing a great job. I mean, it's really very thorough. I've been working with a lot of clients, you know, going through all the reopening stuff. And, you know, with all the unknowns that we're facing right now, you guys are doing a great job putting together whatever you can, you know, at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think the process will speed up quite a bit next week, I expect. So, but we didn't want to wait until, you know, the last minute, because it's a big task. I think that's my last thing for today.
All right, we will need a motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve new business items, 18A through F, 19A, 1, 2, and 3, B, 1, 2, and 3, and C, 1.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor who approve me new business items, 18A through F, 19A through C, 20, oh, that says 19A through C. Please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Mrs. Costello, do you have any follow-up action items?
Just to add the suggested presentations to the board by Thomas.
Okay. We will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to an executive session for matters regarding litigation and the appointment of a person.
Second. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Thanks for coming, Patrick.